Steve, I didn't tie on anyone who felt left out, so I pulled it on my jacket.
I always have.
I expect nothing less.
I expect all my classes.
Cody's looking good in the studio.
Hello. How are you?
Welcome. We're going to call this meeting, this study session, to order at 5:31 PM. We'll call Mr. Domer.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Councilmember Crosby.
Here.
Councilmember Cash Vigita.
Here, sir.
Councilmember Johnson.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Lau.
Present.
Mayor Hepburn.
Present.
All present.
Hello over there.
Welcome all of you here tonight, and our meeting in which we will be conducting a study session on the landscaping and lighting districts is extremely exciting. And I want to remind everyone that per the city's rules, we decorum all speakers, members of the audience, and council members are to conduct themselves with decorum, and to not engage in conduct that interrupts the orderly conduct of the study session. Which means, Christie, can you please behave yourself? And May, please. Mr. Domer, can you please conduct the study session?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'd like to invite Cody Allen, our city engineer, for tonight's study session on landscape and lighting maintenance districts.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. Thank you for having me this evening. Yes, so as stated, we're going to be discussing landscape lighting maintenance districts from the city. The intent. The intent. Anyway, the intent of tonight is really just to give an overview. We will get into some numbers in details. These are snapshot numbers. There is not necessarily a presentation with specific requests or direction that we're asking from council. Certainly, we can get into discussions if that's of interest to council. But yeah, it's really just the presentation on current status and where we look to make next steps towards addressing the LMDs. So, here's an overview of what we're going to discuss tonight. What is an LMD? Touch on the Landscape Lighting Act of 1972. Overview of existing LMDs, current budget details, and then drill down into the further details on a few of them. And then, like I said, potential actions moving forward, something to discuss and consider for the future. So, what is an LMD? It's a landscape lighting maintenance district. An LMD is a subset of what's called a special benefit district. Within the city of Laverne right now, we have six special benefit districts the city runs and maintains. Now, when I say six are in the city, that doesn't necessarily include all the other special benefit districts that are out there that might be on property tax bills, property owners. But there's six that are run through the city, and there may be many more vector control, sanitation, the list is long and lengthy, but those are also special benefit districts. So, what is a special benefit district? Much like the title would probably indicate, it is a district that receives a special benefit. That benefit is something that is over and above what is, well, defined as the general benefit. Like I said, we've got six within the city. I'll highlight them in the Venn diagram. There's Municipal Improvement Act, that's 84-1M. That covers the slopes and drainage along Escaranza. We've got the Community Facilities Districts, 90-1, which covers a number of services in the San Paulo Business District. We've got CFD 11-1, which we had the pleasure of a few meetings ago going through that lengthy complicated administration process, but that is for fire services. And tonight, rounding out, what we're really going to focus on is the Landscape Lighting Act districts. We've got six, District Six, District Seven, and District Eight.
So, three total of those?
Three total of those, yes. District Six has different zones, and we'll get into the details, but three big divisions, yeah. So, Landscape Lighting Act of 1972 establishes a vehicle or method to give authority to cities to derive revenue for certain services and improvements the city can maintain. You'll find it in sections of Streets and Highway Code Division 15, from section 22-500 to 22-679. Really, getting into the meat and potatoes of what is covered in the Landscape Lighting Act, we've got a list here at the bottom of the slide, it's planting and landscaping, as title would indicate, statuary, fountains, and other ornamental structures and facilities, public lighting facilities, other related facilities related to the above improvements. So, for example, if you had irrigation at the top of the hill and needed to pump that water to the top of the hill, it would be pump stations, irrigation system, water mains, it could be access roads, it could be a number of different facilities, of course, ultimately tied to those aesthetic or visually improving type features, but the list is long and wide if it's tied to those. And then park, those can be included as well as land acquisition activities, plated parks and public facilities. So, that's what we can do with the Landscape Lighting Act of 1972. Within the city, through call, I've mentioned there was three districts. So, they're all highlighted throughout the city there, all dialed up. The map on the background's a little light, but what you can see off to the left side, we've got District Six, Zone 4-1, up on the north side of the town. We've got District Six, Zone 3, is an infill project mid-town, just south of, south of the foothill there. In District Six, Zone 5, that's the San Paulo District, we got District Six, Zone 6, and two other residential infill projects. And then, of course, District Eight up at the top, and District 7 sandwiched between District Six, 4-2, and 4-1. So, that's just generally where we're looking at. And this is also kind of an indication of, well, you know, the story of development within the city of Laverne. This, obviously, the old town area was first, and we had various infill projects, but certainly the north part of town has been more in terms of overall city history recently underdeveloped, and that coincides with when these revenue sources were created. Again, a little bit of history, you can look it down, the dates, we've got parcel counts. District Six has a number of different zones within it, there's a total of six. It doesn't start with Zone 1. Zone 1 is a city-wide, it has not been assessed quite a while. But we do have two, we've got 4-1 and 4-2. District Seven and Eight, you'll see they're all sort of in the 90s, early to mid 90s that these were created, again, coinciding with development within the city around that time. LMD process details, okay, so the landscape lighting maintenance districts, these are separate districts that do generate revenue from the property that's located within those boundaries that have been established. That revenue stays within the district. That money does not move into the general fund, it does not move outside of the district. It's intended specifically to stay in that district for the explicit use of those benefits as defined when it was created. You can have different versions of landscape lighting maintenance district improvements. As I went through the list, you know, some areas may have statues and fountains, some may not, some may have fence, some may not, some may have trees and turf, some may have just a hillside that needs to be managed. It's really kind of a wide array of what you can do, and you cannot really effectively or quantitatively in a great way compare one district to another. They're individuals, and so when we get into the numbers, I'll also point that out. The process, staff brings this to city council once a year, typically in the spring. Through requirements of the Landscape Lighting Act, we have to do a public hearing, it is a protest hearing process annually. The assessments that are levied against these properties, they're not taxes. It looks and smells like, smells like a tax, and residents are paying the government to do things that include improvements, but these are not taxes, these are assessments for benefits received. So, it has no correlation with property value. For example, if you had two properties right next to each other, one was double the size as the other, but they were both assessed an equal share of benefit, they would both pay the same amount. Again, no property value correlation.
Cody?
Yes.
These are assessed and paid through property taxes?
Yes, yes. So, these do end up on the property tax bill, which I'm sure, and I know I got mine last week, those are starting to hit the mailboxes. So, you'll see when they do, when the assessor does the assessed value of the property, they apply the percentage, typically it's 1%, and then the line items are below that, the vector control sanitation issue. If you're in an LMD, you'll see that. If you're in a CFD, you'll see that and so on. So, it is paid through the process of the LA County Property Tax Rule. So, that's why it looks and smells like a tax, but it's not technically a tax, so. Parsing, parsing, splitting hairs on it. But I just want to make sure that's clear, so.
It stinks like a tax, but it's not a tax.
So, yeah, so each.
Is it a tax?
Each year, we bring the budget forward in the engineer's report, which is another aspect that's required through the Landscape Lighting Act. And in there, you'll see deficits and surpluses carried forward or applied as applicable. So, it's a running balance, and that's something that's also kind of a facet to be aware of. And then the last bullet point there, it's a very important bullet point that I want to highlight, is obviously, these LMDs, these LMD districts were created in correlation with a development project. When those projects were brought forth to the council, the understanding was that obviously this condition to be annexed or created into a district was intended for these districts to pay their way to their improvements. So, if you see, and we'll get into looking at more visual aspects, I know it's a lot of words on the slide, but if you see certain improvements within those districts, it's funded by those that pay the benefit, and that's the intent of why these were created. Yes?
I've got one more tax question.
Yes.
Taxes are deductible. Are these assessments in any way deductible by the homeowners?
I'm going to encourage him not to answer that question on the grounds that he would be illegally practicing tax law.
We have to ask our attorney.
Well, I don't practice tax law.
So, just retract your question, Mr. Johnson.
I think that would be something they would need to discuss with their individual account.
So, we're not going to answer that.
I don't think they can.
We're just going to assess it.
Because we have to pay the cost of doing the work there.
Continue, please. Enough about taxes. Oh, we're not moving.
Uh-oh, we're stuck.
Talk about taxes. Jerry, we have a problem.
Jerry.
Thank you. They just need me to do it. Yeah, I'll just let you know. All right, so we're going to get into the numbers now, so hold on tight. I'll try to get through this as quick as possible and just highlight things. So, we've got specifically the sub-zones within District Six. You'll see the zone lifted there, the next column to your right is the fiscal year 23-24 budget. The next column to your right after that is the assessment revenue, again, for 23-24. We've got the applied reserves, general fund loan. And I want to focus on this last column here for a minute, CPI escalation allow. CPI is Consumer Price Index. It's basically inflation, right? And it's a, it's a number that gets created, and it is regional, it's developed by the Bureau of Labor Statistics from the federal government to issue it. It typically shows a year-to-year on a monthly basis, so if you see March '23 to March '24, you'll get that. You'll also see a month-to-month difference in that. So, inflation is one of those things that, as we've gotten the recent experience, it's jumped up quite a bit and continues to cause challenges across the board, from a tank of gas to a low of credit. So, within these districts, this district's zones, you'll notice only Zone 6 has the ability to inflate or increase assessment based upon CPI escalation, however, that is capped at 3%. So, there you go. Sorry, I just had to get up. All right, so it's the same table, but I'm highlighting a few things that you may have picked up on as we were looking at them in the previous slide. If you run down from top to bottom and you compare those two that are in the gold highlight, you'll notice the assessment revenue for all of them was, well, Zone 5's a little different, I'll talk about that. The assessment revenue for all of them is being outpaced by the budget. So, what we have is a situation where we either have to apply reserves or a general fund loan, which is that last column, and you can see the general fund loan amount being applied for Zone 3, Zone 4-1, and Zone 6. Zone 5's a little different, we actually do have more room to run on the assessment for if it's maxed out. All the other zones are maxed out to the most that we can assess them. And so, if there's no more revenue to gain from those, they're sort of stuck. There's no CPI inflator and so on. Zone 5, we've got a little bit more room, although, you know, it doesn't have a CPI inflator, so time will catch up. And that bottom bullet point, I just want to point out, the general fund loan contribution for this fiscal year of 23-24 was sitting at $1,608.
Just to clarify that, so when you said apply reserves, Zone 3, 4-1, and 6 do not have any more reserves left, that is why they have to get money from the general fund?
Yes, correct. Yep, there is no more reserves to apply. If they had reserves, we would, and so faced with a situation of balancing the budget, that's where the general fund loan comes in.
Okay, how are we expecting to get that paid?
So, we'll get there. It will be a process, I think, if you don't mind holding that question till the end. Okay, so we had two other LMD districts within the city, we got District Seven and District Eight. Again, you'll notice in the gold highlight there, the fourth table, or fourth column to the right, applied reserves being used to balance the budget. Both also have no CPI escalator.
How? I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
You probably there. Okay, so how many years has this been evident?
Well, so.
That was mine.
Yeah, there is an ebb and flow to assessment districts. Some, some years are not as expensive as others. There's capital improvement costs, so say there was a controller that needs replaced for irrigation, there was some wind event, you know, knocked down a bunch of trees and put something in that wasn't necessarily planned for. On this slide, though, really what this is showing in a 10-year snapshot is like, so how did we get here today? Where were we 10 years ago? Where are we today? This isn't necessarily intended to be a full-blown audit of all history, so we can get to those numbers eventually, I don't have those here tonight, but this is really just intended to be a snapshot to convey sort of the details of what's happening. So, you notice between the fiscal year 13-14 and fiscal year 23-24, that third, fourth column to the right in the blue highlight identifies the percent change in budget. So, 10 years, you'll see we've jumped from 39, 80s, mid-20s, 60. District 8's a little bit of an outlier, and that's why I said there's an ebb and flow, that one's only bumped up 2%. But again, this is only a snapshot looking at those specific years. It's not analyzing 20 years, 30 years that these have been around.
This budget stinks, does it, you know?
Yes.
Sorry.
No. Assessment revenue, again, I'm doing the same comparison between revenue versus where we were 10 years ago and where we are today. You know, with no CPI inflator, I think everybody kind of spoiled the ending on this, is there's no increase, and this has been flat across 10 years, with exception to Zone 6, where we had that 3% CPI increase. Of course, these last few years, where we've been in 7, 10%, we've been stuck at 3, with the years prior where inflation was steady in the 2-ish percent range, we were able to, you know, get something. But looking 10 years to year-to-year, it's a, it's a 25% jump compared to a 61% jump over budget. So, needless to say, we've got some limitations. So, the next question that you might all be thinking is, well, what's the future? So, obviously, Zone 6-3, Zone 4-1, and Zone 6-6, time is out. We are in a situation where general funds are being used. The remainder of those zones that were not listed have reserves, but again, aside from the one that's got the inflator, but even though that's zero, we've got some time to burn against those reserves. However, this is only intended to convey maybe an order of, you know, priority into addressing these issues. This does not include any of those capital replacements, any of those year-to-year expenses. This is purely taking what the reserve is right now, and the, the use of that reserve to balance the budget this fiscal year and dividing that into that. So, I did a little bit of approximation to kind of round out the numbers and get what I think is a better number, but really, you know, any one of these could be in trouble, you know, like Zone 6-5, if some catastrophic occurrence happened to the budget, it could accelerate that, or it could also decelerate and slow it down. So, really, this is just kind of context when you compare those to each other. You know, you look at District Seven and District 6-4-2, those might be on the next round after these three that are in red, we take a look at.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you know from our own budget, we wouldn't want to be using our reserves for operational, and that's exactly what we've been doing for a while on this. And so, you want to have a reserve policy created that allows for those one-time issues, some type of disaster, failure of equipment, or anything like that. So, you know, provided direction, we will come back to at a later date with reserve policies and additional information based on the information that Cody was providing to you tonight.
Question. Go down, I'm going to see the manager's house. Could help with correcting the guide. Regarding Zone 6, it seems like that's where the issue is going to be right now with the zero aspect, then, as far as how many years we have remaining?
I'll hit that one. Can you hear me now? Thank you. Oh, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Yes.
Does that, doesn't that, that, it looks like that might be in District 5, which is, that's right, that District 3, that would be right there, where in North Laverne, that's where Fire Station 3 would be. Doesn't that border the county, county area? And if so, is there something that we can get assistance on through the county, does it borders, county property, for any lighting or landscaping?
You know, these are set up as individual districts, and I'll, we'll get into the exact locations, because I was anticipating that question, got that picture, and all kinds of stuff. We're through the numbers, guys, we're through the numbers, so.
Oh, I love that. But that also, because I set, from short-term memory loss, so I just want to make sure that, huh? I forgot what I was saying. But right there were the reservoirs, so that area looks like it's all metropolitan.
That's part of one of the, yeah.
Okay, so is that maybe something we can reach out to Metropolitan Water District?
No, because Metropolitan Water District has, is a different agency, this was set up specifically for the benefit of the property owners. So, I won't speak for Metropolitan Water, but I would say I would not put a whole lot of weight into the likelihood of that getting out for, to share money to put us out. We could ask nicely, though.
Go on, yes, it's in there. The borders are between the county and the metropolitan, and since we have 3 counties, maybe that's something we could ask them.
Yeah.
Nobody cares, okay. Thank you so much. I care, I care, just trying to save a little money.
And I may have missed it. Now, why is the CPI only applied to one and not to the others? And is there a way to get CPI applied to the others?
Yes, there is a way. If you don't mind, I'll.
Okay.
Come on, Cody.
No, no, bring the question, please. I want to make sure that, yeah.
You've got stallions back here.
All right, so we'll run through these real quick. So, what I've done here the next few slides is highlighted the particular LMD zones that are at the zero level and using the general fund loan to balance their budget. So, that way, we can kind of put real, real kind of visual references to what, where, what's going on there, why do we have these issues? So, Zone, District Six, Zone 3, this is what I like to call to the table or tract, it's up there. Zone 3 comprised, comprised of tract map number 35405. It's got 34 parcels in it. The current annual assessment, again, this is maxed out, since it's been the annual assessment for a number of years, is $99.59 per parcel, that's an annual assessment per year. The general fund loan, again, just repeating what we've mentioned, is it's $4,700 and change on the annual basis. So, here's some actual, it didn't quite come out as good as I hoped it on the right side, but you can kind of see what exactly are we even maintaining with this? So, it's really, in this one, it's the frontage. You'll see we've got Wheeler running there north-south, this is located just south of the foothill, the Del Taco to the north, we've got the NWD Wayner plant to the south there. And so, this covers the frontage, the trees, the lawn, the shrubs, the irrigation, that's what we've got in this one. And here's a snapshot of the engineer's report with the actual line of budgets, you can just look down and see, well, how, how do you spend $8,100 a year on that grain belt there? We've got $600 in staff time, but you'll notice the big line items are contractual maintenance, and of course, water utilities, which, you know, is limited control, but we've got, so that gives us $8,100. To summarize real quick, we've got 34 parcels that currently pay $99.00 and change, we've got a gap between revenue and budget to close that gap, and I want to make sure we're clear on this, it's just a snapshot number, this is just this year, is $138.94 per parcel. So, if you asked me, what would it say? Yes, per parcel, it's broken down for parcels, so, yes, yeah, so, yeah, exactly. No, no, so that would be, you know, hey, how much more does everybody have to contribute to balance budget? And that would be the individual person's contribution over the tax assessment, then goes the DI on this one.
And that would be the annual assessment?
For fiscal year 23-24, that would just be the annual assessment, not paying any deficits, not putting away reserves, not planning for the due expenses, covers the, that's the, that's the month, or the paycheck-to-paycheck type approach. LMD District 6, 4-1, this is a much larger district. This is north baseline, east of Wheeler, it runs quite far north, all the way to Verde, I believe is really the north end of this one. This has got 540 parcels, the annual budget, 141,000, I'm sorry. That's on the next, sorry, sorry. This annual assessment is $141.85. This one's a little different from the two, there's one more that we're going to talk about, is it's got, it doesn't have the frontage necessarily, it's got Viarantio Laverne, which is sort of a Beltway Boulevard that runs up through the spine. It also has riparian areas, so Creek Daylights there, I want to say there. I want to highlight, there's three parks within this district. We've got Heritage Park, we've got Mills Park, and. Those parks are not covered by the LMD.
It's only because I had enough money to buy the good stuff, just in case. The housing does not pay for the parks, the city doesn't pay for the parks.
Yes, the parks, it's a general benefit. The housing covers the Beltway that all those residents probably drive behind the way in and out. They have the riparian area that they can enjoy, and it backs up against their properties as well. Mills Park is.
Right there, show right there. Old Wheeler Road.
Yeah, they're on the down.
Oh, it was industrial.
It's parked right there. It is, it's right in there. In fact, I don't know if you can see, if there is a small spark right there, that is actually. So, we've got the visual reference, the pictures, again, what is it that we're doing? This is, the picture to the right is a street view looking north on Viarantio Laverne, you can see that, about where the greens base on both sides, and everything else is highlighted here. Here's the budget, again, we'll cut to the chase, it's $110,000 on the annual basis, you'll notice utilities at $45,000, and contractual maintenance that adds up to $50,000 is a, is a big chunk of what it takes to make in that district until. Here's that summary spreadsheet, I'm going to get a little repetitive, you're missing this format over and over again. 540 parcels, the gap in budget versus revenue, if you take it down to a per-parcel basis, we're looking at $61.86 as the difference in what we see in the actual.
Again, that's just a large question, nothing else.
And it says max assessment, does that mean some people might not pay the max assessment?
That is a great question. Okay, so that is the max assessment, as in I can't recommend anything more than that. We can go lower though. However, since this is running a deficit, I would not be willing to recommend that to council that we assess less than that. If this zone, let's say, and this is the perfect question to highlight the difference between this zone and district six dash five or six. Six, zone five. Zone five has more room to roll on the max assessment. So we're not assessing the max assessment because right now, between the cost and reserves, we're balancing budget. There's an important distinction there. We have reserves and I'm obligated to return them. You can't just build piles of money to, you have to manage it in a meaningful and effective way. So I could run it more and I could balance budget just in assessments, but I have to return reserves in that one. That one's probably one of the better situations. L and D district six, zone six. So this is the development right up the street here, right on the corner of Fruit and Hamhurst. Again, we've got 30 parcels, the per parcel assessment's $301.39. And I want to circle back to one of the things I said is you'll notice this is one of the higher assessments. And when you look at the frontage, well, it's not that much. You know, one of the components that plays into the cost is the spread. So if you have a big cost and a lot of parcels, you take that big number and divide it by a big number. If you have a cost and have a fewer parcels, you can see the trend there, the per parcel breakdown. Sometimes can jump up, even though it looks like they're getting, I don't want to say they're getting less, but they're covering less. So here's a aerial shot. You can see the frontage. You can see again on the right, the street view. It's that slope from there that we all probably drive by pretty often, I would imagine. District six, zone six, here's the budget breakdown. Again, highlighting the, the big costs here, contractual maintenance, utilities. That rubs out with the other costs getting up to $10,520 on the annual basis. Here's that slide again. So right now, we're generating $9,000 in revenue. We've got 30 parcels. And so the difference in the gap to bringing that revenue to match the budget just for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four would be $49.29, 27 cents, excuse me. And this is one that does have a CPI, and I'll get to your question. But it's capped at 3%. So, you know, with all the experiences last few years post-COVID, with CPI jumping up quite, quite a bit, you know, historically, it's not an uncountable number, but at least in recent times it is, that, that has further hastened or expedited the, you know, the degradation of, of revenue to, to budgeting.
Excuse me, were we charging that 3%?
Excuse me?
Were we increasing that to 3%?
Where we can. So it's capped at CPI.
Were we capturing that along the way?
Yes, we have been. I, I can't speak for all time, but I know for at least, as far as I can go back on, they have been assigning an increase based on the CPI. So inflation's a one and a half percent. We only get one and a half percent. We can't go over three.
I know we talked about three, four dash one and six. How far away are we to be reaching the maximum on two, four dash two and five? I'm there, I'm there.
Good question. So zone six, five. You're going to make me call up the engineers.
What do we have for?
All right. And I will answer Mayor Protem's question because I know she's got it. This is the next slide.
Mr. Mayor, while I was looking for that information, just want to also bring up, you know, we're still facing a lot of things for the state. So AD 1572 is on the governor's desk right now, more than likely is going to be signed into law by the governor. Basically what that does is it prohibits the use of potable water on non-functional turf. A lot of what you see here is non-functional turf. So functional turf will be where you're playing soccer or doing something that you're, but these are all medians and other things like that, landscaping areas. So that's a major concern here because I don't know what the implementation of that assumption is, but we would have to somehow redo our systems to have, you know, recycled water or go through the cost of tearing out the landscaping and placing it in, which is a costly endeavor in itself. So those are a lot of things that we're kind of facing then. You know, it'd be great to have reserves, but you see we're redoing that for operational costs.
Is that, I'm sorry, this one now because I have that written down, is that something that we're looking to do? On ground, on site, we need to change that, drop ton, maybe plant or add more jacks and dirt blossoms?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll fight out within the next 14 days or so if the governor signs a vote or if he signs that. But I'll bend to the discussion back to the council.
Initially, I'm not really about a lot.
It's insane, yeah. So you could, you know, cover the costs with the assessments and then eventually see this happens here now. It's a zero, zero, simple type thing.
So, so why aren't we going to either low maintenance or no maintenance type of turf?
Excellent question. I think you're, you're getting now, you're coming across me, so.
Good question.
Yes, that is, that is a good question. So the one thing, so the one thing I would add, add to, to Mr. Johnson's question is it's a capital cost, right? And so with no budget or, you know, general fund backfilling the gap, it is a decision to be made and something to look at. Return on investment. How long is it going to take to break even and so on? Potential options going forward. So this, this is, you know, very simple. We've got the first bullet point, which is basically a, a do nothing or status quo. Absolutely can continue, continue to do what we're doing. There's nothing within the code that prohibits the city from contributing general funds to cover the gap. I will say, actually, let me say that from the next slide. We could cut services to align with the assessment revenue. So if we have, figuratively speaking, a hundred dollars, we're only spending a hundred dollars. What that gets us is another thing to analyze and assess and figure out if that's something that's workable. And the last bullet point, which I'm finally getting to, Mayor Protem's question here, is we can take a look at analyzing the zone costs and developing a proposed assessment increase, also including a CPI escalator. But the way to do that is we have to go through a Prop 218 ballot process. So we cannot just simply dictate that the, the cost is now, you know, Y when it was formerly X. We have to go through the ballot. One of the things, and I, I didn't necessarily highlight it, but you might recall, if you, Landscape Lighting Act 1972 was signed back in 1972. A lot of these developments were created in early to mid 90s. I think 95 was the newest. Prop 218, which I'll get to it, was signed into place in 97. It went to effect, I think, in 98. So the rules were trying to change a little bit. I'm not going to say Prop 218 is a bad thing. As a taxpayer, I can appreciate it, but it does make life difficult to manage things.
On that ballot process, is that a majority or a simple majority?
I choose slides away from the other thing. Number.
Just, aren't you going to say that's a good question?
Well, bring, bring your questions. Hold your questions. I'm on it. I'm on it. All right. Okay, so what I'm going to do is the next few slides, I'm going to just further expand on those three points. Continue to use a general fund. Okay, so we looked at it. There was one that had CPI inflator. Obviously, it was substantial to keep us going. I will say, I have firsthand knowledge of many cities and agencies with similar districts that have unlimited CPI. So they were raising it 7% last year. They were raising it 10% the prior year. They're still underwater. They're not able to do that. CPI is an aggregate number. It doesn't necessarily keep up with all the features. We've got prevailing wage rules that have changed over the years. We've got fuel. We've got regional other issues. So when you look at what creates a CPI, there's a lot of big numbers and there's a lot of small numbers. And so CPI is some version of a weighted average type of thing. So it's not a silver bullet, if you will, to use a Halloween type analogy to solve our issues. But anyways, to, to round out what I'm trying to make a point on this one is we can continue to do it, but I want to highlight to, to council that costs will continue to grow. So it won't be capped at $39,000 on the annual basis and continue to grow as costs grow. And as costs grow, so will the other districts continue to fall into a similar situation of not having adequate revenue generated from the assessments to cover those costs. So something to think about, certainly decisions to, to mull over and make. We could cut services. So, yeah, of course, we can also cut services. That's something we're allowed to do. We don't necessarily have to maintain it. There's been a number of situations in history where LODs or like benefit districts have been disbanded completely. I'm not advocating for that. That's something we can look at and discuss. But one of the highlights that I want to bring to council's attention is if we say turn off the water, for example, as an easy one, those are big costs, that would obviously relate, result in the loss of plant material. If we let certain facilities continue to degrade and not maintain them, defer maintenance, at some point, there's a tipping, tipping point that those are not, you can't return those back in a cost-effective manner. Now we're talking about full, full replacement. So cost-saving man, uh, cost-saving options might also commit to a semi-permit future. You can't necessarily take something back cost-effectively if we, if we go down that path. And of course, the Prop 218 process. So like I mentioned, Prop 218 was adopted in the same code in 1997. It does add restrictions to local agencies and the ability to increase special assessment rates. We would have to go through a Prop 218 process for any increase over and above a CPI adjustment if we had a CPI adjustment. So zone six dash six, we don't have to do it each year when we raise it by the one and a half to three or whatever the number says. That one's fine. But if we were to add a CPI adjustment to it, which I would recommend when we get to the analysis and bring that back to council, adding that CPI is, is a Prop 218 process. Mayor, this is your question right here. The ballot process is a.
Simple majority?
Simple majority. So if you had, for example, a returned ballots, so if you had 100 parcels and we put her out to a ballot and we got 10 back, a visible number, but we got 10 back, they would need to have six vote no. That is what it is. If five voted no, then the increase would pass. Six, if they fail, simple majority. Noticing period. So as we embark down this path, if we choose to go there, it would be a 45-day notice. These are mail ballots, so it would follow a very similar format to what we did with the CFPU on hash one annexation. And the ballot process, just to highlight, is not a special election. It is a special process tied to Prop 218. So next steps, where are we going from here? So at this point, council staff, Director McWade, myself, other public works staff will be reviewing and analyzing our current status, certainly the budgets, but what is it going to do to maintain those zones? Where can we cut costs? What can we not cut? Where, what do we think is going to be something that we can bring back to council and get some, some further direction and feedback? So we're going to run through a few scenarios and from there, you know, there's infinite numbers of ways that we can break this down. Prop 218 ballot process does cost money. I, I am optimistic and hopeful that one will pass, but I also would want to make sure that in full transparency and transparency to council is they do often come up with a lot of resistance. Because voting to increase your, not taxes, special benefits is a hard, it's a hard ask. So something to consider. And so next round of public hearings for next fiscal year will be brought back to council in spring of 2024. Although we don't have a date for when we will do that, it's something that we intend to bring back to council sometimes for them so we can have out of the time to discuss, analyze, mull over, and of course, need any noticing periods if, if we so choose to go down that directions. So that concludes my presentation. Does anybody have a question?
I think we've all, I'd like to open up public comment, I think, and then come back to the desk network. Let's go ahead and open up public comment. Does anybody wish to speak on this issue?
One quick question, no big deal.
Mr. Henry.
I can hear your voice loud and clear, Mr. Henry.
Just a quick question. You mentioned something about the sprinklers and stuff like this and the water.
And your name is Phil Henley and where do you live?
Phil Henley, 4315 St. Mark Avenue, Laverne, California.
Thank you, Mr. Henry.
You're welcome. What type of sprinkler system do you have? It's just a question. Do you know, or so.
Why don't we get that question out and then we'll come back when we'll go to the comment and you can ask those questions.
There are, just, you know, this doesn't have anything to do with me or what, you know, just air trial and any number of different companies make a system that will, will compensate for the moisture in the air. I think that if you look that up and found out what systems are, were, that they work, the city's going to save a lot of money on water. That's all. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Henry.
You're welcome.
You're the best.
Any other questions?
How can I be the best when you are, right?
I feel like, oh my gosh.
Oh, wait, wait, maybe Wendy's the best today.
With that, we'll, yeah, whoops. With that, we're in close public comment, bringing out the desk. Mr. Howling, would you like to, I know that our public works has got a myriad of controllers that are all monitored, actually globally, aren't they? But anyway.
So I think we've got a wide array of irrigation systems. I wouldn't be comfortable in saying that we've gone all completely to drip. And I wouldn't also be comfortable in saying that we haven't switched some over to drip. But drip is sort of the standard practice now for water conserving, you know, aspects. And what we want to do is obviously from the environmental and water conservation, maintain that, but the bottom line counts too in saving costs. The, the controllers mentioned, yes, there are some very advanced controllers out there, extremely. You would be shocked how much you can spend on a silver box on the side of the road. But they're, they're very interconnected and they're very smart. And again, you know, it's a capital improvement discussion. It's a, it's certainly a component to think about it. You know, with 15 grand, the cheapest on the high end, and they, I've, I've done projects for the 50 grand, not the city.
And we have what, 19 parks? Let me press. Twenty?
But I would also like to mention, because part of what he was speaking about is kind of irrigation that looks at the actual weather-based patterns. There have been some agencies that employed that technology and then realized it was watering more because the turf wanted more or the plants wanted more. And they actually ended up dialing it back, even though it affects a little bit the plant health, just because the cost of the irrigation was actually responsive to the weather pattern. So it's always that magic balance of the two.
Thank you. You took his. Okay. Do you have any questions or comments or just, I mean, my, my biggest thing, I mean, I've been on councils since 2015 and they used to bring these up all the time, every year. And they used to go into reserves and dip here and there. And I would, I mean, the question is, why are we here now? We really should have been adjusting these many, many years ago to do this, to make sure that we weren't in a negative. You know, reserve is exactly what it means. It's a reserve like an HOA. You reserve to put your streets in or to do modifications or improvements, fencing, things like that, irrigation. We're here now. So it really doesn't matter why. It's just, it's a little bit on the frustrating side for me, knowing that I've been looking at these districts for a long time, but there was no direction at the time to say, hey, we're going to run out of money here. And you could see it on some of those because we're dipping into the reserves and yet, but you couldn't go beyond. Then we had to give money back. It was too much after a certain amount of time, which to me is just ludicrous. But I, I understand that's the way the districts are laid out. But I think, I mean, we really don't have a lot of choices here. I mean, like Councilor Johnson's like putting turf kind of stuff. It's a problem that is, is that it's a very good idea for long-term. Problem is we're faced with a deficit right now. We can't be dumping money on it because we're in general fund. I mean.
But that's what we're doing.
That's what we're doing. I know, which we should be.
We're using the general fund money for this.
But it's not the same.
But. No, it's.
Now, as a point of clarification, because I'm looking at, and these slides aren't numbered, but it's the estimated reserve fund projections. It says that the current levy is at the max that we're allowed to, to tax, well, not to tax, because it's not a tax.
Not a tax.
To, to assess, except for one, except for one district. So I, I don't know historically if that's been the case, that we have maxed out. Because I thought that was, to your point, I think they have done everything that they could to get as much money. But without a CPI and without any other.
But not any changes either to change the format that we were going to be in the errors because as we know, as you stated, the costs have gone skyrocketing. Between labor alone and then along the parts, gas, fuel, equipment, and aging systems that break all the time. I mean, irrigation breaks all the time. I mean, it's just, you know. Mr. Crosby.
Yes, I believe that we really do need to go through. But I believe the, the proposition 218 process is not going to be a favorable process either because if it's mail, mail-in ballots and they, they send them back, people that are going to send them back are the no's. Because they're going to be upset. Now, there might be, there might be a few that said yes, but I'm saying, that's not trying to. But we still have to, if we, if we try to do that later on, not saying we're proposing that right now either. But if that does come back in a negative way, we have to think about what is the alternatives as well.
I think we have to have some alternatives before the ballot goes out. Do we, do we want to keep the, the maintenance the way it is now? If so, we need to increase this assessment. If not, we'll put in DG and artificial turf and then let it go from there.
But the cost of that.
There is an upfront cost of that.
Huge.
But look what we're doing though. Correct. Look what we're doing though, currently, I mean, we're, we're getting nailed, by the, the general funds getting nailed because the revenue's not there, um, you know, we can take out the turf or whatever landscaping is there, let it go more natural, uh, something that's drought tolerant, uh, whether it's artificial turf or just a DG or something, um, if, if the, if the evidence isn't there to fund what we're doing, then we gotta stop it.
I, and I, and I, I believe that as well, but moving just to drought tolerant or to artificial turf, as one person had just put it in their backyard, uh, only a few years ago, the cost savings to get it back is, is like fifteen years, so the over-expensive cost to even put it in is, is, is way over than what we're losing right now, but we're in a no-win situation here, like you said, and I do agree that we have to make changes.
And, and I, I just wanna kick this can down the road, I'm, I'm, Mayor, same with you, been here since twenty thirteen, I've been dealing with this issue, so, but, you know, if we could come up with a, a, several solutions or ideas that we can fix this now, rather than kick it down the road, or however it's drought tolerant, plants, whatever the case might be, I think, you know, long-term, yeah, you know, you mentioned that in fifteen years, and, you know, it'd be fifty years or a hundred years, I'm not gonna be alive, and, but the city will, you know, it's gonna go on, so as you can see, since nineteen oh six, it's been here, and, uh, that's just something that we.
It'll go.
It moisturizes a lot, so. Thank you, thank you so much, but anyway, that's my two cents, thank you.
So I think, you know, from my perspective, I think the, the viewpoint would be, you know, come back to us with what the different costs are, and I wouldn't say it's strictly in those three categories, right, it might be a combination of how are we reducing costs, and then what are the options for trying to get the assessments higher, right, but I also think whatever we're doing, especially if we are gonna go the Prop two eighteen route in any measure, there has to be communication to the public, because I think to Councilor Prosky's point is, if I just got something in the mail that said, by the way, we'd like to charge you an additional fifty dollars of partial, you know, whatever, I feel like my immediate response is like, no, right, but if you explain to me, if you like what you see outside of your house, and this is the environment in the neighborhood that you like and wanna keep it this way, this is the, what it's gonna cost, so I think there has to be an explanation of that, that's very clear, so that people can make an informed decision, and then, on that point, I just wanna clarify, so in your example, if there's a hundred parcels, it's not that a hundred ballots or a majority of the ballots have to come back, it's whatever comes back, comes back is a simple majority of the ones that come back, okay?
Yes, thank you. So I think, as you Crosby mentioned, it's sort of, I, I designed the Prop two eighteen is, is significant hurdle to create, so.
So basically, uh, as Mayor Protem Laugue stated, and best for all of us, it's just the fact that we need to figure out a way to fund this, and so we need to come back and figure out how we're gonna do that, now, if we were to, uh, go through an increase, we have to, if we're to do the CPI, we have to go to Prop two eighteen, if we don't do a, a CPI adjustment, we go to just a straight assessment increase.
You have to do the Prop two eighteen. You're gonna do it.
Yeah, if you're gonna do it, we do the CPI with it now.
And like I said, um, there's other districts that I have firsthand involved in that have unlimited CPIs and they're still balanced, so just because we fixed the problem now doesn't mean that it won't be a problem in a hundred years it might come back, hopefully, hopefully it's a hundred years and not ten, and we certainly wanna bring back something that will be effective and have, uh, reasonable longevity for council to consider.
Well, and then, I don't wanna come back every two years, you wanna do this once? Because I, this is, like I say, this has been an issue for me, and really never was addressed, uh, now we're addressing it at DEFCON five, where all of a sudden, we've got three areas, one's eighty-one percent beyond its budget, which is just, I'm sorry, that's ludicrous, you have another one sixty-one percent and then thirty-seven percent, the other ones are gonna fall in place right after that too, you know, so, you know, Mr. Domer.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I wanna reiterate, uh, that point there, but also what Cody is saying about, you know, what we wanna bring back to is something that is sustainable for the long term, so, you know, it wouldn't be to keep the turf, especially when you're looking at, you know, state legislation, which is saying you're not gonna keep the turf, so we're gonna have to look at different things that are out there, bring you back options, bring you back, uh, landscape plans, do some community meetings, get, uh, with the folks who are out there, who are driving by it, who are walking by it, because it's within their neighborhood, to get their input on that, so it is an elaborate process, but that's what we wanna do, because as you see with these numbers, uh, it's critical, and we don't want it to go more critical.
Well, and I think, too, I think as, as councilors, Mayor Protem Laugue said, transparency, let's get it out there, because this is gonna affect these people's, uh, turfs, their areas, uh, the common areas, we've got parks, we've got some of these huge, especially that one center, huge area that if we do anything, it's gonna affect everyone, so we need to let everybody know what we're looking at, what the costs are gonna be, and obviously, we need to increase the rates, but they're gonna have to be the ones to say, this is why, this is the reason, if you don't want to know, if you say no, then guess what, this is what we're gonna have to do, because we can't afford, you know, staying on the town, so.
And I'll go just as far and say, is this area is not within the tracks, they're on the frontages, they are the beauty of LeFern, rather than in the homes track, in the homes too, so it's, it's not, it's all the residents going and diving down and seeing that.
This is kind of, especially the one, the ones on Wheeler Avenue that are right there in front of you, so, okay.
Um, just one last question for, uh, Mr. Domer, I know that there was a, a professor, I think, that had students that were assessing the types of, um, landscaping and whatnot, and so I know that they were looking at a heat index and what that, and so I don't know if they were doing a similar study with, with regard to drought, um, or drought tolerant plants, or what would be the best view, so if we do, are looking at something where we are replacing, what are those options, I just wanted to put that back on your.
Absolutely. The poem study was very scientific and, uh, needed a summary, but, uh, it was with the spacing of the, the soma cells or something, and.
Oh, your way, beyond way, your way out there, your way out there.
But I think partnership with ULB and the resource that they have would be very, very helpful in this regard, uh, because we can be their laboratory, and that's what they've done on some other things, uh, including those studies that I cannot recite.
Well, I think also too, that, you know, this is the point too, um, your governor keeps pushing down stuff for us to implement, and the problem is, there's no money behind him, and if we're really gonna do an infrastructure, we need to think about recycled water, that will cure a big portion of our problem, the problem with recycled water systems, it's huge, you have, it, it's an astronomical, but it can be done, but our high electeds have to give us a big note of money in order to even think about it.
And landscape is ever-changing, because there's water rights everywhere.
Oh, well, yeah.
Obviously, I have one last thing, just in regards to money, see if we can find a way to get some of the grants, I know the state grants were, I don't know if it's still in effect, but they're giving out to communities and, you know, individual citizens that have, they changed to a partial area, if we could, if we could look into that as well, please, definitely, thank you.
So direction is come back to us with some ideas and some multiple ideas, actually.
Bring it back is not easy, Mike.
Thanks, Cody.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Howling. With that, we're gonna adjourn and take like a four-minute recess, and we'll be back for a regular meeting.